With all board members present, we'll go ahead and get started. The moment of silence and pledge of allegiance will be led by Ms. Bounds.
Please stand for a moment of silence. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't think we have any elected officials here this evening. Welcome fellow board members and staff and others in attendance. Thank you for being here. Once again, we appreciate your patience and cooperation as we follow. Social distancing guidelines said that our meetings may be held in person. The board will hold its regularly scheduled quarterly work session on July 25th at 5:00 PM in this boardroom, in the Andrew Johnson Building. Board members, you have received an email communication today regarding the withdrawal of item 10D. Are there any other requested changes to the agenda? Ms. Owen.
Madam Chair, I would like to add discussion and possible action regarding the reopening plan. And I would also like to move the reopening plan in front of the calendar in case that discussion might change calendar decisions.
Madam Chair, the calendar that's on the agenda is for the Board of Education meetings, not the school year calendar. Yeah, and so you would like to...
Under presentation of the plan...
Can you just make a motion when we get to that item?
Sure.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you. Because it is on the agenda, the reopening plan is on the agenda. Thank you. Okay, any other changes? Okay, do I have a motion to approve? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Norman, a second by Mr. McMillan. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and now I would like to recognize Ms. Ramona Dewe, who has a special presentation for us. She is our Coordinated School Health Director. Ramona.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have some very special guests here tonight, students across our district who worked very hard to create a vaping PSA, to help promote anti-vaping, a very serious behavior that's impacting the health negatively with our students across the district. Our student advisory council decided last year in August that this was a very important issue that they wanted to tackle, so they came up with the idea of this PSA. And our winner is a group of two students. We have Cameron Gibson and Ethan Elliott from Powell High School, and we're going to play that one first. Thank you, Prentice.
It's me and Ethan here to say, tell vaping no way. If you're told that you should try it, tell them that it's not worth it. Vaping causes lots of sickness. Vaping itself is sort of ill. The nicotine makes you addicted, so then your lungs get evicted. Have you ever heard of lung cancer? If you face it, you better vaping causes this fatal disease. Do we want that? No, please. Vaping isn't ever healthy. Don't waste money, stay wealthy. Effects of vape don't protect you, but also to your loved ones too. If you catch someone who's in the act, you better know how to react. Don't ask or look or talk or say, you tell somebody right away.
We have our second place winner, Noah Kelly from Karnes High School. You all know Noah very well, he was our student rep. And Noah, it was actually his idea, who was one of the students serving on the Student Advisory Council.
Last year, who also said it was very important, and he was one of the people who came up with the idea. And I told him tonight, I had nothing to do with the voting, at all. I just passed on all the PSAs to our Public Affairs Department, and they did a great job selecting the winners. So, we would like to give these checks. If you young men would like to come up, and your board members come up, they have certificates for you all. And thanks to Virginia Bab for providing the funds for these winners. So, we have $500 for each one of these young men. Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much. And thank you to all those students who were the winners and who participated in that, this important PSA. Thanks, Noah, great to see you. Okay, Ms. Cootney, I'll refer to you for the reading of the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item six, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
With a motion by Mr. Norman, a second by Ms. Hill. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item seven A, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy D-110, annual operating budget as amended.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Norman, a second by Ms. Hill. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item eight A, approve memorandum of understanding with Boys and Girls Clubs of the Tennessee Valley for receipt of up to $600,000 in funding from a 2020-2021 21st Century Community Learning Center grant to be used for time card processing, flagging students in the Aspen system, and salaries and wages of part-time tutors at Carter, Dogwood, Lonsdale, Maynard, Norwood, South Knoxville, West Haven, and West Hills Elementary Schools.
So moved.
With a motion by Mr. Norman, a second by Ms. Christie. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item eight B, approve memorandum of understanding with, for inspiration and recognition of science and technology, for receipt of a STEM equity community innovation grant in the amount of $12,550 for building awareness in robotics and a pipeline in Dogwood Elementary, South Knoxville Elementary, South Door Middle, and South Door High Schools.
Second.
With a motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Norman. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight C, approve memorandum of understanding with Knox Education Foundation for fiscal year 2021 grant funding in the amount of $125,000 designated to teacherpreneur grant recipients to be announced in fall 2020.
So moved.
With a motion by Mr. Norman, a second by Ms. Owen. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight D, approve memorandum of understanding with Knox Education Foundation for fiscal year 2021 grant funding in the amount of $30,000 designated for the Leaders for Readers Program at Belmont, Beaumont, Bell Morris, Bonny Kate, Dogwood, East Knox, Fountain City, Green, Enskip, Karnes, Lonsdale, Maynard, Mount Olive, New Hopewell, Norwood, Pond Gap, Rida, Sammy Hill, Sarahmore Green, South Knox, Spring Hill, Sunnyview, West Haven, West Hills, and Westview Elementary Schools.
So moved.
With a motion by Mr. Norman, a second by Mr. McMillan. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight E, approve receipt of East Tennessee Foundation's Fulton High School Foundation grant funding in the amount of $2,957 designated to support staff stipends.
With a motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Mr. Norman. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item eight F, approve receipt of a Tennessee Department of Education Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Grant through the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act in the amount of $12,886,555.71 for the benefit of public and non-public Knox County schools.
With a motion by Mr. Norman, a second by Ms. Hill. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item nine A, approve use of statewide contract 43017 for purchase of Benchmark and Universal K-8 screening tool, Benchmark monitoring for K-12 and RTI square, and special education assessments from NCS Pearson Incorporated at a cost of $226,800 using general purpose and IDA grant funds.
With a motion by Mr. Norman, a second by Ms. Owen. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine B, approve a contract with Design Innovation Architects Incorporated at a cost of $182,500 plus reimbursable expenses for the design of additions and renovations to Bricky MacLeod Elementary School using fiscal year 2021 capital plan funds.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Bounds, a second by Mr. Norman. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight, nine C, approve a contract with Barbara McMurray Architects LLC at a cost of $100,000 for a Farragut Elementary Grade Solution feasibility analysis using fiscal year 2021 capital plan funds.
Move to approve. Okay, motion by Ms. Horns, second by Mr. Norman. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine D, approve a contract with Coop Associates Incorporated at a cost of $75,000 plus reimbursable expenses for the design of required Title IX upgrades to Farragut High School's softball facilities using fiscal year 2021 capital plan funds.
Motion by Ms. Hill, and second by Mr. Norman. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine E, approve a contract with Thomas Caldwell Architect at a cost of $130,000 plus reimbursable expenses for the design of the Gibbs High School football stadium using fiscal year 2021 capital plan funds.
With a motion by Mr. McMillan, a second by Mr. Norman. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine F, approve a contract with Binkley Garcia Architecture LLC at a cost of $81,425 plus reimbursable expenses for the design of roof upgrades to Karnes Middle School using fiscal year 2020 and 2021 capital plan funds.
With a motion by Ms. Hill, a second by Mr. Norman. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine G, approve a contract with Rouse Construction Company at an estimated cost of $19 million for the construction of a new Lonsdale Elementary School using capital plan funds.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Satterfield, second by Mr. Norman. Discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Satterfield.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we vote, I just want to go back on the record again and emphasize the importance of community involvement when developing Lonsdale and working with the minority subcontractors. Had the opportunity to look at some of the bids that were presented, and I saw on one of the bids that they had a community impact plan, and this plan included things such as engaging Lonsdale community with the pre-planning and designing, which also includes naming some things from past and present of Lonsdale that represents Lonsdale. This plan also had intentional, intentionally sought-after minority subcontractors, so not a good faith effort, but actually making a commitment to have a diverse subcontractors group. We have a diversity development manager in the county that should be able to help with the good leads with that. And then lastly, be transparent about the process and the deadline so that all stakeholders could have the opportunity to participate in receiving the economic benefits. A lot went into the efforts to get us here, and I just want to make sure that the construction company understands the importance of being intentional about the impact you will have in Lonsdale and continue to work with that community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Satterfield. Mr. Norman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Also, I would like to remind the board that... Uh, also, I would like to, uh, remind the board that, uh, or to keep the board aware of this process, I hope that they will, uh, be informed on the design plans. There's a lot of interesting things about that site, and, uh, certainly many things that could be beneficial to the kids over there for the long haul. So, just keep, keep your eyes open and be alert for those plans as they come available.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item nine H, approve a contract with Sparkman and Associates Architects Incorporated at a cost of $37,393.50 plus reimbursable expenses for the design of a roofing project at Sunnyview Primary School using fiscal year 2021 capital plan funds.
So moved.
Second.
With a motion by Mr. McMillan, a second by Mr. Norman, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item ten A, approve Knox County Schools 2020-2021 differentiated pay plan.
So moved.
Who was the second? Ms. Satterfield, okay. Motion by Mr. Norman, second by Ms. Satterfield, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item ten B, approve general purpose budget line item transfers for the period of January 1, 2020 through March 31, 2020 in the amount of $98,061.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Norman, a second by Mr. McMillan, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any, um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item ten C, approve request of Legacy Parks Foundation to construct a public access ramp in DOT for Beaver Creek on the property located at Powell High School.
So moved.
Second.
And we have a motion by Ms. Downs, a second by Mr. Norman, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item ten D was withdrawn. Ten E, approve Knox County Board of Education 2021 annual calendar.
So moved.
Second.
With a motion by Mr. Norman, a second by Ms. Satterfield, discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and the next item, thank you, Ms. Cottney, the next item is the presentation of the reopening plan. And as we move into this item, I'd like to just provide a little bit of background on the decision that, um, that it appears on today's agenda as a presentation and not an item for the board to vote on. The superintendent and the board chair comprise the executive committee. When we met in June to set today's agenda, the superintendent and I determined that the best course of action was for the board not to approve the reopening plan. The reason for that was to be sure we did not get into a situation that would make it difficult for the superintendent to make alterations should conditions change. Board Policy A-141 gives the superintendent the ability to cancel schools as needed in emergency situations. Granted, this is a reopening plan and not an emergency, but the reasoning is quite similar. Board members do not weigh in on cancellations due to sickness or weather. It is not recommended that boards micromanage their superintendent. Such tasks are delegated to the superintendent in Board Policy C-120. It states, in part, "The Director of Schools shall be the chief executive officer of the school system and shall have, under the direction of the board, general supervision of all the public schools, personnel, and departments of the school system. The Director of Schools is responsible for the management of the schools under the board's policies and is accountable to the board." Earlier this week, TSBA, the Tennessee School Board Association, released guidance indicating that boards should vote on reopening plans. Deputy Law Director Gary Dupler and I discussed this and decided that the decision made in June by our executive committee is still appropriate. Policy C-120 goes on to state that the Director of Schools is responsible for implementing board policies and for interpreting them to the staff, students, and the public. The Director of Schools, in consultation with principals, staff members, and other persons and groups as topically appropriate, shall develop administrative rules and procedures as necessary to implement board policies. In my view, Mr. Thomas has done this extensively and is planning to present a reopening plan this evening, at which time board members will have the opportunity to make comments, ask questions, or discuss changes. As with any issue we discuss, board members may make a motion, and with a second, that motion would be discussed and voted on. I think it's unfortunate and irresponsible that anyone would put into the public arena that this board could not vote on an item relative to the school system we govern if we so choose. There's absolute, there is absolutely no truth in that notion. The plan being presented inherently allows for flexibility as needed to the superintendent as needed, so the superintendent would likely have the latitude to make changes as needed. However, I feel the board policies have stated implicitly why I did not feel that we must vote on this plan. By presenting this plan, the superintendent is carrying out his, the expectations of this board as cited in policy. And so that's, I just wanted to give everybody the reasoning behind the thoughtful decision that we made, um, as a team between the executive committee with guidance from our law department. And so what I would like to do now is, I would like to, um, for this to be just a little bit different this evening, I would like to ask Superintendent Thomas to go through the plan, then we have three or four folks signed up for public forum, I would like to hear from those folks, then I would like to, um, have a board discussion at that point. Um, so that's, that is the way I would like to proceed unless anybody has an issue with that. Ms. Owen, did you have something?
I have a question for the law director, and then I would like to make a substitute motion. Um, Mr. Dupler, can you tell me what the powers of the executive committee are?
The executive committee is made up of the, uh, the board chair and the superintendent or director of school, and, uh, it's set out in policy, uh, but, uh, their, their biggest task is to set the agenda. Um, after that, uh, they have, I, you know, and I don't, I could, I could pull it up and, and let you know a little bit more, but, I mean, that's, that's, that's their biggest task, and then, and then after that, they have certain other, uh, powers that, that the board, uh, would then, uh, ratify, uh, if needed. But I can take a look at it and tell you more if we need to.
So if we-
Does that answer your question?
It does. If we delegated a power to the executive committee, they would have that power?
Sure.
Okay, so, as, as a rule of thumb, as a daily management issue, do they have decision-making authority?
Well, that would, that would depend upon what you call a daily management issue.
Really, any issue. What, what decision-making authority do they have?
Uh, well, I, I think it's more the, the director of schools or the superintendent has the, has the, that, he's the admin, the chief administrator, so, I mean, he has that, that daily management capability. Um, with that said, uh, y, y, you know, it's been said by, uh, not only me, but my predecessors here, uh, who advise the board, is that, you know, the board can weigh in at any time and can, can change a motion or a policy with five votes, so, um, y, y, you know, the director of school certainly has that power, uh, to, to maintain business, so to speak, uh, but if the board wants to weigh in, the board can certainly weigh in.
Thank you, Mr. Dupler. Um, for those folks who came on the board at the same time that I did, I would like to remind you that we had this conversation at that time during some of our very first meetings. The reason we had that conversation is because it was suggested that the way the agenda was being set may not be considering everything that should be on it. And at that time, I was told, this was four years ago, when we asked for adjustments to the way the agenda is created and maintained, I was repeatedly told that there is never a time when a board member has been unable to put an item on the agenda. So, I'm, I'm unclear as to how the executive committee has decision-making authority that something cannot be on the agenda, or that something as weighty as this issue that we have before us would not be there. For several weeks, I have requested over and over that the meetings be noticed, that they be open, that we be transparent in what we're discussing, and over and over, I've been told that it's not necessary. Our whole purpose for being here is transparency between the school district and our communities. That's what we're supposed to be doing, we're supposed to ensure that transparency. And when we cannot discuss an item, um, because it's not on the agenda at all, and because no one will put it there, or when it is worded in such a way that it gives the community the impression that we're not going to discuss it, that's a problem. Um, essential law requires that we be open and transparent, and part of that is that our agenda should be clear exactly what is going to be discussed and voted on. Until today, this wasn't even listed on there, even though it's been said in public over and over and over that it would be presented today and in this meeting. So, somewhere, there's a disconnect between our, our spoken intent to be open and transparent to the community and our actual willingness to do that. So, I would like to make a motion that we have discussion after this presentation, and that, after that discussion, if we would like to have any kind of, um, action, that we'd be allowed to do so. Thank you.
Are you making a motion? Because that's all, I mean, it's-
I would like to make a motion that we have discussion after, with possible action.
Okay.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Okay, are you agreeable to the timeline I laid out? To hear from public forum after the presentation before our discussion? Okay, all right. So, all in favor?
Wait, one more.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Norman.
Okay, um, what I don't understand is the, the chair has presented, has presented the, the, the process. The, the, it's the chair and the execu, execu, executive committees' position that we don't need to vote on this, and it's ad, actually advantageous, uh, to the system, to the superintendent, to the people involved in making these decisions for us not to be voting on it. It's their, it's their, um, you know, it's, it's their composition, uh, they've been in control of it. There has been public meetings all over the place, there's been discussion all over the place, I don't know where this lack of transparency stuff comes from, so, I don't see the need for that, and I won't support this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Norman, and I, I will, um, Ms. Owen, did you have something to say before I make a comment?
Yes, I would, I would like to point out that the only advantage to not voting on this issue is a political advantage. There are multiple policies that we have adopted, that we have voted on right here, that very specifically lay out how the administration can change those as they go along. Our, um, our discipline policy is a fine example, that decisions can be made within that policy, and principals can make adjustments as they need to, administration can make adjustments as they need to, because we put that language in the policy. So, there's, there's no reason we couldn't do that same thing with this plan. We could make a motion that allows adjustments as needed.
Can you restate what your motion was? Because I think I'm thinking about two different things.
Is to have a discussion and possible action.
Which, I mean, that's, that was on the, in the, on the plan anyway, so I think, hopefully we can-
All we had was that we were going to have a presentation.
Okay. All right, in my statement, I said we would have a time for questions and comments, and so it was, it was, and we, it's just like anything that is ever on our agenda, this board always has the prerogative to ask questions, comments, and to make a motion. So, there's, it, it, it just isn't needed, because our, um, our way of doing business, our practical way of doing business, even if something is not stated clearly on the agenda, is that this board can always make a motion, and we can always discuss.
We can, but when it's not stated clearly on the agenda, it's not clear to the public that anything could be done.
Okay.
And so, we wouldn't be having email after email asking when we're going to vote on something that we're very clearly not going to vote on, or when we are going to have discussion about something that's not even on the agenda. We wouldn't be having those emails if it were clear on the agenda, and that goes all the way back to everything that the task force has said, which were the only two meetings that were public meetings. And over and over, they said communication is extremely necessary, and communication is what we just do not have with our constituents.
Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, mine is a, I guess, a procedural question for the law director. Would it not be better, under the circumstances, to, uh, everybody agrees that we're gonna, uh, listen to public forum, and then after that, would that not be, uh, the point that, uh, Ms. Owens should make her motion rather than making it now? Would that, from a procedural standpoint, would that not be better?
Mr. Dupler?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. McMillan. Uh, yes, I mean, I, I mean, again, as I think, I think you all are agreeing, I mean, any board member can bring a motion at any time, but I do agree with what you're saying, Mr. McMillan, is that the proposal is for the director of schools to go ahead and present the plan, and then after that's public forum, and then after public forum, certainly, uh, this board, I, Ms. Owen or any other member can, can present a motion at that point and then, and then go forward.
At that point, my belief is that, at that point, any board member could criticize certain aspects or praise any aspects or any route, and I think it would, that's why I say it's procedural. Nobody is going to deny anybody, any board member, the right to, I don't think, I say, I know I'm not, to say what you want to say about the plan. So I don't see, I, I just think that would be a better way of doing it, but-
That's what I was envisioning, Mr. McMillan. Ms. Bab, did you have something?
Yeah, I just want to say, I mean, I, I feel like it's been kind of insinuated tonight, and I've got some emails about our lack of transparency, and I had someone like, we need to make these meetings streamed, and I, I'm like, I, I don't know, I, I have not gone because I couldn't go to some of the meetings for some help requirements. I, I could from home watch the meetings, although I'm sometimes having trouble finding them, but, I mean, we put it out there, and if there is a mis, mis, miscommunication out there that we are not letting people see our meetings, the task force meetings were all televised, our meetings are televised, they're recorded, if you can't watch them live, you can go back and watch them and speed over them if you want to, so, I, I'm not sure where, um, you know, did people want the plan a month ago? Yes, we all did, but, I mean, you know, maybe, that, that's not meaning we are not transparent, and we're not getting information out there, so, I don't know where this idea that we are not letting people into our meetings, we are trying to, trying to let people know, I mean, yes, maybe we should communicate some things differently, but, um, I do think we try to be as open with our meetings as we possibly can, and for those that are confused about it, please contact me, and I'll try to help you find them.
Thank you, Ms. Bab. Ms. Owen?
Uh, could we have some clarification from, um, the superintendent on how many focus group meetings were open to the public and noticed to the press?
Can, can we just have the presentation? Because I think if we-
Well, I'm being called a liar, so I would like some clarification.
If, if I may-
Ms. Hill?
If I may. I, I am thinking, and Ms. Owen, I don't mean to speak for you, but I am thinking that this motion was made because with, with just what is out there in, in public on the printed agenda, the perception is that Mr. Thomas is going to present this plan, and that's it. That there will be, e, even though it is a flu- That there will be, even though it is a fluid document, I think the perception has been that this is what the plan is going to be, and there's no room for the Board of Education to, in fact, make a motion or propose any changes. And I think that is probably what has garnered so many emails and so much concern when statements have been made that this is what it is. So I think that that was the spirit of Ms. Owens' motion, and my spirit in a second, in that we all will have a right to speak up and certainly make any motion to change any part of this plan.
Absolutely, as we always do in issues. Ms. Owen?
I was just waiting to see if there were going to be answers to those questions, but I can ask them later.
Apologize.
The question was about focus groups?
I'll ask them again later.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to have discussion regarding this topic after... Is it acceptable if we have the discussion after the presentation and after public forum? Okay, all right. Any other discussion on that? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so, Mr. Thomas, we will turn the floor over to you for your presentation, and then we'll have public forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I appreciate very much your patience as we crafted the plan that's in front of you this evening. Yes, we would have all loved to have had it sooner. And it's been, it's been a lot of work put into this. Before I get started too far into this, I would just like to thank the staff, our executive team staff, and the folks that work with them for all the hours that they have spent working on this and the time that they've spent working on this. So thank you, staff and team, for all of your long hours and hard work. I know our community's been eagerly awaiting this announcement. And in a minute, I'm going to unpack some of the details. But before that, I just wanted to begin by outlining some of our goals in very broad strokes. As you'll see, this plan provides back-to-school, in-person learning, which is something that many of our families felt essential. So again, one of the goals in school, back in school and learning in school. At the same time, it puts safety measures in place to protect the health and the well-being of our students, our teachers, our staff, who are returning to our school buildings. Number three, it was clear that some families simply did not and were not ready to return to the classroom. So this plan provides those students and families with virtual learning program, which they can assess using the Chromebooks provided under our one-to-one initiative. It's also important, and it was mentioned in the task force, that we don't, that they did not think that budget should limit and constrain us in terms of providing safety measures. So this plan's not limited by budgetary constraints that would prevent the implementation of safety measures or that would prevent us from providing learning opportunities for all students. And I think that was something that was mentioned also as well, that we, whatever our opportunities are, must be available to all students. As of today, we've spent a little over $800,000. And, you know, these are unbudgeted as we went through the budget process, but $800,000 providing safety measures and getting ready for the school year. And this is a rough estimate, very rough estimate. We would probably project to spend somewhere between $4 million and $5 million more throughout the year for this. And that does not include the virtual learning program, the positions that are included in the virtual learning program. And if you looked at that, we're probably talking more like about $8 to $9 million. But again, the virtual learning program is something, I wouldn't say that's necessarily COVID-related. It is, but it isn't, because that's something we would continue post-COVID. So we're looking at probably $4 to $5 million. And again, that's just a guesstimate. At this point, it could be more, it could be less. And next, I'd like to reiterate a couple of things I've said before. First of all, I'm very grateful for the input that we received from the community, including the survey respondents, over 32,000, I believe, the focus groups and community task force. I was asked a question about the focus groups, and I know those were not open to the public. I can answer that. Actually, when REA, our research department, did focus groups, I asked to participate in those, and I wasn't even allowed to participate. And the reason for that, it was explained to me, was your presence might interfere with the responses that we get. So we feel like it's better that you are not part of that. So, okay, I said, "Yeah, that's fine." So I conducted focus group meetings myself with the same folks and gave folks an opportunity to answer questions and give their input. And although they weren't open to, those weren't open to the public, I think some of the conversations involved some sensitive topics, too, that would have not been right to have had on a public basis, because it involves some specific situations with students, teachers, and so forth. So although, having said that, I think there were a couple of retired teachers maybe that participated in the teacher focus group. And then the community task force, as we heard their report last week. So, you know, this feedback has been essential for our planning process, and I sincerely appreciate everyone who took the time to share their thoughts and concerns. And I would also like to thank Dr. Buchanan and our partners at the Health Department, because they have been, made themselves available on a very regular, frequent basis to help us in developing this plan and providing their insight and their guidance. So a special thank you to Dr. Buchanan and her staff. Also, our elementary and secondary principals. We met with them a couple of times, most recently, it was just the other day, and got their input, tried to answer their questions, and incorporated some of their suggestions into the document you have this evening. I'd also like to thank Tanya Coats, our KCEA president, and our KCEA collaborative conferencing team. We met with them yesterday, although the topic wasn't the plan. The topic was getting the MOU on the agenda for our August meeting and getting it approved and signed and so forth. But we took that opportunity to go through with our collaborative conferencing team, go through the plan, and again, some excellent suggestions came out of that meeting. And it was, I just appreciate folks hanging around for an extra hour and a half, two hours, while they're not on contract, just to give us an opportunity to go through the plan with them. So thank you to KCEA and our collaborative conferencing teams. Second, I want to ask our stakeholders for an extra measure of grace. I mentioned that before. So as we move towards reopening, and I've said this before, it's not going to be perfect on day one. You know, I wish it would be perfect on day one, but it's probably not going to be. And, you know, we're going to make some mistakes, and I'll own that upfront. But I will say, I can assure you that as a district, we're determined to get better every day and correct the mistakes that we make and have, in the end, a product that, on all counts, that our community's going to be very proud of, and also is going to make our school system even greater than what it is today. And with the support of the community, we'll be able to meet the challenges posed by COVID-19. And with that, I'll get in, I'll move into our plan with Slide 1 to have a short PowerPoint presentation for you. But one of the things that has become clear in listening to our stakeholders, in particular, our principals and teachers, is that schools will need extra time to plan and prepare for reopening once teachers are back on contract. Our teachers come back on contract August 3rd. So this, what we would ask is that providing them with some extra time, an additional week, to plan and prepare for the reopening once teachers, once they're back on August 3rd. This would include building parallel schedules for both our on-campus students and our virtual program students. So with that in mind, our starting date for students has been moved back by a week. That means that students will now, their first day would be Monday, August 17th. And again, this will give us time to adjust our procedures, deploy the Chromebooks to students, and Chromebooks will, they are arriving. They're kind of coming in stages. We think maybe a week or so ago, got, received 1,500 of them, and I think 5,000 were scheduled to be delivered this week. And then over the next few weeks, I think we'll be getting them in increments of about 5,000, so until we have the 40,000. But that would allow us time to deploy the Chromebooks, to answer questions from our families, and implement our health and safety measures that are critical for this plan's success. Now, how do we get an extra week in the calendar? What we are asking or doing, and we'll be asking, we have asked the state for a waiver, to use five of our inclement weather days. And this will leave us with five days for the remainder of the school year. You know, we start out, by the times that we attend school, we earn 10 inclement weather days. So we would use five of those days and have five days remaining. One thing, though, that's different, even with fewer inclement weather days, that hasn't, we haven't been able to do in the past, is to have instruction on those days. So with having Chromebooks and being one-to-one, there's an opportunity there to give us a little bit more flexibility and to continue instruction, even when buildings are closed. And I know, and our students will love that. And if they're closed because of inclement weather or illness, then we would have that opportunity, providing that folks have electricity, obviously, to power their devices. But we would have opportunities to use our one-to-one or our laptops for instruction on those days. So that's a little different than it's been in the past. And again, just want to, can't thank the board enough for your support on the one-to-one initiative, because that's going to really allow us to do some things we haven't been able to do. Okay, when school begins on August 17th, what does that look like? We'll have two options. The first is to attend class on our school campuses with additional safety measures in place to prevent the spread of COVID-19. The second option is to enroll in our virtual learning program, which will provide instruction remotely. And in a moment, I'll share more details about both options. But I do want to emphasize that whichever options families choose, they will be committed to that option for an entire semester. Now, initially, we talked about wanting to give families more flexibility, but having talked with our principals and looking at it a little closer has become clear that in order to organize our classrooms and allocate the resources in a manner that we need to do it, we would ask for a firm commitment for the full semester, if you're in person or if you're in the virtual learning program. Now, in preparation for the upcoming school year, we've also created three primary indicators. Those indicators are green, and you'll see this in the plan, green, yellow, and red, to help us clearly communicate what the expectations and the requirements will be. So green, green would be the green light to do everything like we've done it before, standard operating procedures, pre-COVID, if you will. Now, in all likelihood, I don't see green happening right now. I'm hopeful that a vaccine or some type of a cure or whatever will be developed so that we can eventually get back to green. But in the meantime, yellow would represent being in school, but it would be the increased safety protocols that would be enforced while we're in school. And then red means that everyone would move to remote learning. So in a situation like today, where we are, would probably be in yellow. We would be operating in yellow. And where we were back in March when we closed, would be an example of red. But again, back in March when we closed, we weren't able to do what we will be able to do with the one-to-one initiative. If you recall, in March, the best we could do was provide the learning packets that review items. There was no new instruction introduced and testing and so forth. We weren't able to do that. So again, for this coming year, we will be able to provide those new learning and testing and so forth. So as I said, we'd start the year on yellow. And also, under this plan, it's possible for some schools to be on yellow and some schools to be on red. For example, if there was a cluster in our county and a particular school that that school needed to operate in red, then we could do that, and everybody else might be in yellow. Or it could be a situation where multiple schools were in red and other schools were in yellow. So what will these options look like? For students who return to school, the academic program will be largely unchanged, but with additional health and safety measures needed to address COVID-19. The look and the feel of the school day will be very different. We will be focusing on additional mitigation strategies to prevent the spread of the virus. For example, first of all, temperature checks will be conducted on every person who enters our school buildings in order to identify students and staff and visitors who have a fever. Second, we will provide hand sanitizer and disinfectant to every classroom and then implement stepped-up cleaning protocols in an effort to prevent the spread of COVID. And finally, all students and staff who are able to wear a mask will be required to do so when physical distancing is not possible. You know, masks, it's inconvenient and it's awkward. We realize that. Some parents, I know, are uncomfortable with asking their students to take this step. However, according to the CDC, and fairly recent information, and we've heard it for months now, wearing a mask is the most effective way to slow or stop the virus. So again, wearing a mask is a way for all of us to care for each other. Our second option is the virtual learning program. Students will be able to enroll in this program, actually, starting today. And the last date to enroll will be Wednesday, July 22nd. That's a week window, which is relatively short. However, we did survey parents about the virtual learning plan, so it is information that we have shared while to give parents an opportunity to be thinking about that. So we've got the enrollment to close scheduled right now for July 22nd. Families, participating families will be required to attend an orientation session to prepare for this program. And learning, of course, would take place using the Chromebooks provided under the district's one-to-one initiative. And the virtual learning program will closely align with the requirements of an on-campus classroom. It will include instruction on new material, graded assignments, and also testing. And while this program will not be able to offer all course options available at our traditional schools, all students will remain on track to move to the next grade or to graduate, whichever the case may be. I'd like to announce also, to reassure students and families that our virtual learning program is being implemented with fidelity. The following individuals have been appointed as principals and assistant principals for the virtual learning program. Leanne Hahn, who is Executive Principal of Career Magnet Academy, will be the virtual program principal, special assignment. And Leanne is here, so thank you, Leanne, for being here and for grades 7 through 12. So your work is cut out for you. So know you're very capable and able, and we'll look forward to seeing all the work you're going to produce in really a short amount of time. Also, Jennifer Garrett, and I think Jennifer is here. Jennifer, thank you for being here as well. Will be Executive Principal, she is Executive Principal, Paul Kelly Academy, but will be principal in grades K through 6. So again, a lot of work that you're going to be doing over the next few weeks, and then after that, a lot more work. So thank you for your interest in the program. Also, Zach Brewer, Assistant Principal at Moreland Heights Elementary, is going to be a virtual program assistant principal. And Chris Layton, Assistant Principal at Jefferson Middle in Oak Ridge, will be virtual program assistant principal for grades through 7, or 7 through 12. A lot of times, not really bragging here, but a lot of times, we lose folks to Oak Ridge. So this time, it's reversed. So appreciate Chris's interest in applying for the job and know that our folks are going to do excellent work as we venture into the world of virtual learning. I know that for many families, choosing between in-person and virtual learning is difficult, difficult decision. It not only affects the work of teaching and learning, but will also, it requires families to consider broader issues related to childcare, student health, and the demands placed on working parents. And with that in mind, we've tried to anticipate as many of the questions as possible and provide clear answers that are easily accessible. So details about this plan are now available at knoxschools.org/connect. So I would encourage parents, families to, tonight, to, if you're not already online, get online and go to knoxschools.org/connect and look at all the exciting things that are going to be available to you. Also, on the site, you'll find a full plan along with summary documents, frequently asked questions. And over time, these documents will be updated to reflect new questions. There may be things, although I think we've done a really good job of thinking of everything, I'm sure that folks will think of things we haven't thought of. So we'll take those questions, and we'll be glad to answer them and to also put them on our website. And also, haven't talked a lot about this, because this deals mostly with families and students, of course, and teachers, but also, we have a school-based workforce management plan for our employees. plan for our employees. And this document is posted on our website as well, and goes into more details about what is available for employees who may have underlying health conditions. Maybe you don't have an underlying health condition, but you know what? I'm just concerned about coming back to work, and I just don't know right now if I want to. So again, go to the website. We've got that information on there. We've taken a look and going by the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. Also, we have policies where folks can take a medical leave of absence, use their sick leave. And also, right now, what we're granting folks, as I mentioned, there may be folks who just are not comfortable coming back to work right now. Hey, I want to wait and see how this plays out. So if you want to take an administrative leave without pay for a semester and still have your job protected, then we're also doing that. Again, it's a leave without pay for a semester, but to give employees who maybe just are really concerned about coming back right now, an opportunity to also keep their job and come back at a later time. And I would like to say, too, just remind everyone that circumstances can change quickly. And we've all experienced that over the last few months. Right now, you know, things are not looking as good, because the number of positive cases is going up every day, the number of hospitalizations is going up every day, and we're tuned into that. And I don't think, if we don't get started on August the 3rd and use those 10 days with our staff and with our teachers developing these plans, then we're going to be right back where we were in March, if we're not in school. And there's a possibility, we want to start out in school, and also with the virtual learning program, but if things get worse, and in consultation with the Health Department and the state, the directive is, you're not going to be back in school. We want to be ready, and we need to be ready. Have the computers deployed, have our teachers ready to go, and if we're operating in red, we'll be ready. So there's still, tonight is the 15th, students come back on the 17th, teachers come back on the 3rd. There's still a month, there's still four weeks for us to take a look at everything. And again, it's not just our decision. We're going to be working with the Health Department, and the folks responsible for the health and the welfare of this whole community, and our employees and our students. So I just wanted to take a minute there and just reassure everybody that this could change. Just because if you vote, whether you vote on it tonight, or you don't vote on it tonight, it could change. And we're going to keep that in mind. And again, safety of our students and our staff is first and foremost. But okay, my hope is that by embracing physical distancing, hand washing, and wearing masks, we will be able to diminish the impact of COVID-19. And I'd just like to say again, the CDC has said, if you want to stop, or you want to prevent COVID-19, you want to stop the spread, wear a mask. So hoping our parents, you know, are listening and understand that, again, is for the safety of our students and the safety of our staff, and for us to have the opportunity to get back to something that resembles normal, even though it's going to be different. So this year, this school year won't be easy, but our students are worth the struggle. And our students are resilient. We've got the best teachers, I'm convinced. Get to meet with them regularly. I like to, it just makes me want to smile when I talk about how great our teachers are and our administrators. And they're going to make it work, and they're going to work hard to make it work. So I just want to reassure families of that. And by working together, I know we can overcome the challenges, and there are going to be many, but we can overcome them. So with that, Madam Chair, members of the board, staff and I are happy to answer questions. We have the staff, as I said earlier, the folks that here that have worked really hard on the plan, and certainly experts in their areas. So they're ready to address questions that you might have. And thank you very much for this opportunity to talk about our plan.
Thank you, Superintendent Thomas, and we look forward to, I'm sure we'll have lots of questions. But Ms. Spab, first, can we have public forum?
Sure. Calling Kristi Rouse for public forum. And after Kristi, just so she can be prepared, we have Sandy Bush.
You're going to speak together?
Hmm?
Ms. Rouse, if you will just state your name and county of residence when you start, and then you'll have five minutes to speak.
Okay. I'm Sandy Bush, actually. Kristi and I are representing the same group, so.
Oh, okay.
Is that okay?
No, that's totally fine.
Go for her, okay. Hi, I'm Sandy Bush. I live in Knox County, I live in District Six. So I actually emailed the board, just kind of like my personal story, and several of you responded back, so I appreciate that. Can you hear me okay? Okay, thanks. So I shared more of my personal story, so, but today, I am more representing a group of parents. So thank you for letting me speak. Sorry, my printer printed this off very small. I would like to say thank you for allowing me to speak here today. While my time may be brief, I'm speaking on behalf of a silent but mighty group of parents. Currently, there are an estimated 8,000 students enrolled in Knox County with an IEP, according to the National Center for Education Statistics. This accounts for roughly 13% of all students in Knox County schools. On July 8th, the working group board meeting, at the working group board meeting, Dr. Askew spoke that the parents who are most concerned about their child's education are currently parents of children with IEPs. I would like to thank Dr. Askew for his attention to this. As a parent, I often feel that my child's education is overlooked, left behind, or placed last in line. And I do want to let you all know that I did read the reopening guidelines, I had a chance just right before this started, and I do appreciate that there was a section in there, but I did feel that this was still relevant, so I wanted to go ahead. As a group of parents from all nine districts, we are not silent, and we do not want to be silent. Our children have the right to access free, appropriate public education. From March to May 2020, COVID mandated the emergency shutdown of Knox County, and many of us received less communication for our children with IEPs than our children without IEPs. On an average, we received just 10% of the communication than that of our students in the general ed population. When speaking privately with our general education teachers, we hear the same comments from them, that they feel expendable and uncared for and unheard. We, the parents, communicate with one another. We work together to know the current laws protecting the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act for our children. And with little to no district communication given to us, many of us have great relationships with our children's case managers, and we see the love and care they have for our students with special needs. We value the work the case managers and the special education teachers do, but we also recognize that we are their parents. As parents, we are organizing. We've been holding weekly meetings. We've met with COVID Task Force Manager Joan Grimm, Senator Becky Massey, and members for the ARC for Tennessee, East Tennessee. We do not want our children's service hours reduced, but we are open to new ways of meeting those service hours. We recognize that there's no one-size-fits-all for our children, but we also must point out that our students' IEPs are legally binding documents. I've had parents reach out to me from one end of the IEP spectrum to another. While I admit your task is very large, there are many helping hands sitting idly by, watching and anxiously waiting to help us, the parents. An IEP team is described as all collaborative members involved in the child's education who have individual needs. There have been many months this year, more months than not, that the parents have played all roles on this team, PT, OT, speech therapist, than the members of the team individually. Yet Knox County has prepared a plan without consulting us. We feel that the district has lacked empathy and care for the people that they serve. We want our children, the teachers, and the staff to be safe in an appropriate learning environment, and we want to be heard. We want fair treatment and learning for our children with IEPs. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And if you'll just state your name and county of residence.
Yes, my name is Dever Shattuck. I live in Knox County. I am a proud father of five, a proud husband. I have four grown children who have graduated from Knox County, have a daughter at Bearden Middle now, and one of my oldest daughter is going to start at Vine Middle as a teacher. So I want to really start off and say thank you all for what you do. So nobody runs for school board and serves on school board for power or for prestige. You all do this because you love our kids. So I appreciate that, and most parents appreciate that. So I think nobody joined the school board thinking they were going to have to sit here and make this kind of a decision. So I do not envy your job. I also stand before you as a physician, and so I will just go ahead and say, I'm not a public speaker, so my stage fright will get me. But I'm a hospital physician. I run the hospital service at one of the local hospitals, and I'm also medical director of three nursing homes. So everything I'm going to say here is my opinion, but it's well-informed opinion. Unfortunately, I'm sort of the bad news doctor. So since I just take care of critical care patients, acute care patients, and nursing home patients, they're all sick. And I will say that COVID is real. We have had patients, I had a patient die yesterday with the COVID disease. It's very real, it's very, very serious. We're developing better care, but there is no cure, and unlikely to be an effective vaccine for months and months. And certainly not an effective vaccine that we're going to have widely available to our communities. So unfortunately, I'm here to speak truth. I'm not the doctor that you come to to hear what you want to hear. I, like all other parents, really want my daughter back in school. She's a social kid, and she needs to see her friends. But just because that's what we wish for doesn't mean the way it's going to go. COVID really stinks. I know everybody's sick of it. They're sick of being closed down, they're sick of being out of school. We need our school, we need our kids in school, but it is what it is. I also have read the plan you all have put together, and clearly, a tremendous amount of thought went into it, a tremendous amount of effort and time went into it. And I want to personally thank the superintendent for that effort. There is a lot in that plan to really like. I especially appreciate that there, did I run out of time, or did?
I think I did. The computer, will see it, I'm so sorry.
Oh, that's probably, I probably did it. I especially appreciate there is an online option. So I think parents really appreciate that, and I think that's fantastic. I appreciate a lot of the safety measures that are going in that. But the piece that's really missing, and the piece that I'm very concerned about, is the masking requirement is not nearly stringent enough. We cannot have words like masking, except when social distancing's not possible in a mass gathering. The classroom is a mass gathering, okay? We, as a community, are not good at masking. When I stand in this room, I see almost half the board members aren't correctly masked. How can we expect our kids to do that? When I work in the hospital, we have policies about visitation. All our visitors are expected to mask. They don't mask great, so the nurses and the doctors have to go and tell them to mask. It's really an impediment to the therapeutic relationship, and I can't imagine the barrier it's going to be for teachers to require masking in the classroom, because it's going to be the constant excuse of, I can't breathe, my parents says I don't have to mask, unfortunately, the masking's been politicized. So all that's very unfortunate, and masking is by far the most important thing. It's not about you can't socially distance. If you sit kids in a classroom, 20 kids breathing, the teacher, who has to stay in that classroom for six hours, is going to have a massive viral load exposure, if those kids aren't masked. So it's not about social distancing in the classroom, it's a mass gathering. That's dangerous. So I really ask that we really beef that up. I'm not saying to keep the schools closed, but that's a critical safety feature. Kids do get this disease, okay? We've had three children under 10 die in Tennessee in this pandemic. That's before the, really, the teeth of the pandemic has struck us. We're right in the middle of that now. More children will die, and I fear if we open schools without adequate masking, we're going to face that tragedy. I deal with death a lot. Our kids, y'all, our teachers, our schools, our community don't. Y'all don't want to have to deal with that. Y'all are going to take that responsibility on your shoulders, if you don't keep the teachers especially, who I do fear will get sick, and I'm afraid we're going to lose teachers if we don't mask adequately. So I would implore you to beef that piece of this reopening up. That may take some more time. Frankly, I would recommend that you have N95 masks for all the teachers, they'd be required to wear them all day. That's how we're going to keep our teachers safe. I want to say that there's been a lot of talk of the false choice of choosing our economy over our safety. It's truly a false choice. We have to be safe and defeat this virus if we're going to have an economic recovery. The way we're going to have economic recovery is to get the thing defeated. The way to defeat it is to deny the virus its human host. You put kids in school, you're giving them human host to spread amongst. So again, got to mask them, we've got to do better with that. Kids are going to get this, they're going to be asymptomatic, they're going to spread it to their parents and grandparents. That's going to keep our community sick, okay? One of my physicians, she got the virus from her five-year-old child who was in daycare. That happens. It's going to happen a lot in the coming months. Y'all don't want the parents and the grandparents' deaths on your hands either. So just urge you to consider those things. I urge parents to use the online option. I believe using the online option is going to keep you safe, your kids safe, our community safe, it'll open our economy quicker. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name's Lance McCold, Knox County. Thank you for letting me come to speak to you. Well, I appreciate the doctor who came to speak to us before, because I think most of us are pretty worried about this. I guess the one thing I want to talk about is, well, a couple of things, but Mr. Thomas and his staff have done a great job trying to figure out how best to deal with this and get our kids back in school. Everybody wants the kids back in school. But it's going to be really hard. And if we do it wrong, there are people who are going to die. So I've been asking myself, well, what's the, what is keeping us from doing the job right? And, you know, I talk to you guys fairly often, and you and I know that our schools are grossly underfunded. We needed a whole lot more money before the pandemic hit. And Mr. Thomas has mentioned, what, eight, $10 million? He's already anticipating spending unbudgeted money, and I don't know where that's going to come from. But I bet you there's probably a lot more that's going to be needed if we are actually going to be able to do school in a way that's safe for our children and our community. So I've been saying, well, gosh, what, how did we get into this mess? And, you know, I've come to the conclusion that this entire mess is a result of mess management by two people in our state. Well, in Knox, the two people that most affect us, and that's Governor Lee and Mayor Jacobs, because both of those people decided that they were going to open up things, open up things back in March. You know, we started to have a little bit of stuff in April, things were good, but now we decide to open up. So this whole problem, and you know, now it's exploding. And if we bring the kids back into school, much as everybody wants it to happen, it's hard to imagine it's not going to get even worse. But these people, their decisions, we trusted them to make the decisions for our county and our state, to do the things that would keep us safe and keep the state working. They decided to do things against the guidance of the CDC. And now, this is where we are. So the importance of that is, you know, calling people out when they may make a mistake. You know, my mom has said, when you break it, you fix it. So these people, they have made these decisions that set, have put our community, our children, our families, our economy in this terrible mess, they need to fix it. So I'm here to urge you as board members, and Mr. Thomas as a superintendent, to demand the resources you need to do this right. You know, social distancing in a classroom with 28 kids is not social distancing, you know? And masks will help, but we know it's not going to be enough. You need a whole lot more resources. You're going to need people to do, ask these questions. to do, ask these questions when the people come in. This is not, you know, Mr. Thomas is a very optimistic fellow, very nice, but, you know, I think there's, at some points, I think he's, he's too optimistic and isn't really own-up to the fact that this is too big for the resources we have. So, I'm calling on you to start pushing back at these people and say, "You guys made this mess. Now, help us fix this." Thank you.
Tanya Coats.
Tanya Coats, Knox County, President of the Knox County Education Association. Thank you, Madam Chair, and school board members. What a day. We thought two weeks could not get here quick enough. However, now that this plan has arrived, the open reopening of schools, let's get the elephant out in the room. This plan took a lot of time. The "what ifs," "why can't we," "how are we," "don't you think," and a few other questions, just to add a few starters, seem to be a never-ending task from day to day. The major concern with parents as well as educators is wanting to know the guarantee of their safety, and why can't we wait? If you can remember, even though it was just, March was just three months ago, today seems like, those three, three months ago just seems like it was today. We, Knox County, included the educators, knew that all too well that the magnitude of COVID effects was to open Knox County schools was something to be seen. We public school, we public school, public education here in Knox County was and still is as a highly highlighting the disparities of inequities for our students, but also for our staff. Many of you may not know that our staff was not prepared because they didn't have the resources to be, to educate our students. Many will not like what I have to say at this point. We are going to be damned if we do, and damned if we don't. But, we must open schools, because, you see, we have the best educate, education commissioner in the White House. Oh, but let me fix that for you. So much so that we need to help her obtain a permanent vacation in November. Our Constitution says that we must provide a public education to all students. And she nor anyone else can threaten us with the fact that they're going to remove public funds of something that we barely get from them, the 8% that I talked about, to, just because we wanted to delay schools. Schools can function as long as we are safe. The superintendent has guaranteed that he is not trying to send students nor any of his staff back to die. But, as you heard earlier, we have to do something. Our hopes and the necessary non-negotiables that educators are asking is that you must ensure that we're going to be safe. Utilize this social distancing. Must ask people to wear masks, and continue to wash our hands. But, we are going to do what's best for all of our students, and knowing that educators will support whatever is needed. We, again, just hope that you have our safety in your hands. Thank you.
That concludes public forum.
Thank you, Ms. Bab. And now, we'll go to questions and comments from the, from the board. I know I had, I made a couple of notes, but, go ahead, Ms. Owen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have heard questions about whether we can guarantee that our staff and our students are safe. We have heard that it is sure that there will be deaths. And with that, with that magnitude, no individual should be fully responsible for a plan of that magnitude. As a board with a duty to ensure the management of our local education agency, we have a duty, as a board, to take and accept responsibility for this plan or any other plan. Is it possible that there could be unforeseen and unintended consequences? Absolutely. We all know that, which is why we don't want to be responsible for this plan. Hanging our appointed superintendent out alone to be solely, singly, and individually responsible for a plan should be seen as a dereliction of our basic duty to manage and control our public schools established under our jurisdiction. And before anybody says, "That won't happen. We're all for Bob," I have already been contacted by several people who were very concerned, because they asked board members about the plan, and they were told that that decision's Bob's. We don't have a hand in it. And when those unforeseen circumstances happen, when we have deaths that we are being guaranteed will happen, are we going to step back and say, "It's not on me. That was Bob's plan?" Or are we going to do our elected duty and take responsibility for whatever is decided for the districts? We have already hung him out to dry by putting, putting him solely in charge of making sure this plan happens. We have already abandoned him. And these decisions should never be happening as our decisions or the administration's decisions. These should be our decisions. We should be working together. We should all be there. This shouldn't be something that we just sit back and hang out and wait for our superintendent to bring to us. This is, this is, all the training on board superintendent relations, right here is where it should be happening. And it's not. It's not right. And however much, we don't want to be responsible for it, whether we love it or hate it. I don't love it. Whether we love it or hate it, we have a responsibility. This plan should be on me, too. It should not just be on one individual. The bottom line is that that's just not right. I have a whole pile of questions over here from tons of people. And over and over, we have heard that there are more questions than answers. When there are more questions than answers, that is not a plan. That's not feasible. If there are more questions than answers, we should be working with our superintendent to find answers to those questions, not sitting back and washing our hands of it and letting him take all the heat. That's not why we're in these chairs. And that's all I have to say.
Ms. Christie.
Well, I just, first of all, Mr. Thomas, if you feel like we have abandoned you, I apologize for that. I mean, I don't know how you feel about this. I don't have a problem voting on this plan. I, I question, and maybe this is a good question for Mr. Duhler. You know, if we vote on this specific plan, what happens if we need to change something on page 12, or 15, or, I mean, is that something that has to come back to the board? And I am curious as to what the superintendent's feelings are. Like I said, I don't have a problem with it, but, you know, we have to have a plan. You know, all we have heard is, we do not have a plan. And I think the worst thing that could happen would be leave, leaving here tonight without a plan, or a plan that we didn't all agree on or come to some consensus to. But, it has to be something that he can work with. And if he's going to have to be constantly bringing stuff back to us, I just think that would make things very difficult for him.
Mr. Duhler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Christie. Ms. Christie, I think you, you've put your finger on the number-one issue as to why the Director of Schools has to be somewhere, somehow, in charge of the plan. You know, because, as he's, as he said, I mean, this plan is going to likely, more likely than not, require some type of tweaking, some type of changes as, as the year goes forward. So, he needs to be able to do that. If I may, I can make a suggestion that, that if this board does want to vote on this plan, my suggestion would be to leave, as part of that motion, the Director of Schools, the, the leeway, you know, the discretion, to be able to, to make changes as necessary. And then, if the board wants to come back and, and address that at a later date, it can. But, but you're exactly correct, which is, the board meets, you know, once a month to vote, you know, outside of special meetings. So, it would be unwieldy, at best, for the board to have to come back and make changes, specific changes to the plan.
Yeah. We, we don't have another voting meeting until August 12th. So, that would be the next opportunity we'd have to vote on a plan if we don't have discussed, or resolution this evening.
So, my other question would be to Superintendent Thomas. Like I said, I don't have a problem voting tonight, but I would kind of like to hear your thoughts on it. I mean, do you, do you, would you feel better about the plan if we did vote on it, or do you think it would be better that we did? I mean, I don't know. I'm just kind of curious to hear what, what your thoughts are.
Mr. Thomas?
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair, Ms. Christie, too, board members. I, if you, Mr. Duhler, if you vote on it, please make it so that, do have the authority to make a change, you know, without having to have another meeting. You know, I was, I was, I was charged with, hey, you know, we've got Twitter, we're developing this plan. And, and again, it's like I said a few weeks ago, I work for y'all. I don't want to get, I don't want to get in between board members, some that want not to vote on it, some that want to vote on it. Hey, I'm, I'm here to do a job, and I'm here for their kids. I'm here for our staff. And I'm here for you, to, to try to do what you want me to do. And this is what we've tried to do. So, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm saying, how's it, you know, I'm riding the fence. I'm neutral. I mean, I, I welcome all the support that you want to give me, but, you know, it's kind of a lonely feeling, I'd say, you know, being responsible for, you know, for it all. But, that's what you pay me for. And, so, I'm, I'm basically, I guess I'm saying I'm good either way. So, please don't ask me to make the decision for you on this. I've made the decision for you on your plan, if you will, if you want it, but, but...
But, if we do vote, you would like for us to have, and maybe if we do, if it does come to vote, maybe Mr. Duhler could help us with the wording, so it is something that you wouldn't have to be constantly bringing back to the board. I guess that's, that's my biggest concern with it.
And, and that would certainly keep you informed. I'm not going to go out there and do anything without, you know, without you knowing about this in advance.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Yeah. Ms. Christie, that was, that was our, the whole reason, because the superintendent, I felt the superintendent needed flexibility, and he concurred that day. So, that's what we went with. Ms. Bab?
Yes. I just want to say that I hope no one thinks that we don't support our superintendent. I mean, my feeling is, we hire our superintendent to make decisions. I mean, we have some educators on this board. I am not an educator. But, what I feel like we have done is hired someone to make good decisions for us. And then, he has hired people under him, his executive team and Delmore, to make this decision. And I personally texted with Mr. Thomas today and said, "Whether we vote on this or not, I support you. You need to know I support you." So, I, I've tried to communicate that, and I want him to always know that that, you know, I have his back on that. And I do feel like if, if anybody's worried about it, and if, if it takes something to show that from the board. But, I think that's why we have hired him, is to make some of these hard decisions for us. And then, he brings them to us and lets us know about them. I'd like to ask a couple of questions. And I don't know who, I'll, you tell me who the best for. One of them's a really quick question, is, we've got some hard dates in here about deciding on online school, and this is just being a real tr- I know a couple of people that are moving here after that date. Will there be any flexibility on people like that, that are actually moving to the district between that hard date and when school starts?
And, and again, I'm, I'm going to ask John, what I would like to do is say yes. I'd like for us to look for ways to say yes, more so than we look for ways to say no, and if it's a special circumstance. And I know our principals and all, yeah, come on, John. I mean, from the scheduling standpoint, that's part of it. We've got to get these schedules built. We've got to know who, you know, the students that are going to go virtual, and those that are going to be, that we can plan for to be in the building. I, you know, I think if it's some special circumstances, that we can make it happen, I'd like to be able to say, you know, we'll work with you on that. But, but John, too, you might be able to elaborate more on it.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, Ms. Bab. So, I think the reason, as Mr. Thomas said, those dates are set for that, is really kind of backward planning for what we need to do for the virtual, because the way we're set now, August, by knowing that, schools have till August 3rd to build out their virtual schedule. And then, after that, the ladies we introduced earlier will have to hire a staff or whatever can't be covered, in three weeks, hire the staff, build the master schedule, and be ready to go by the 17th. So, that was, that's a pretty tight timeline for that to happen. So, I think your question was around people moving to the area, and I think we would-
But, I think it's a small amount of people.
Yeah. I think we would treat that totally like, as they came and they registered at their base school, I think, you know, again, it would be a small enough number that we should be able to absorb that when they enroll, and let them know both options are available to them.
And then, I think this other question is for you, too, because we've actually kind of already talked about it. But, I've had someone text me while I'm here, and so I think to have that public discussion about this. I think this is a real, I think with elementary school, there's not a lot of choices in classes. But, as we get to high school, and there is a lot of choice in class, and I'm specifically hearing from people with IB and AP questions. And I know there's the concern for people that want to choose the online version of the limitation. And I, and I, and I actually texted back to first, I said, "It is, I think, in my understanding, is a bit of a catch-22 of, until we really know who wants the classes, it's hard for us to know how many people we can offer." But, if you can speak a little bit more of that in the high school selection-
Sure.
-issue with online.
So, you know, where the, I know Mr. Thomas covered the caveat for the virtual is, is one, there, there could be some limitations to the classes, just the sure numbers of how you do that. So, if, I think everybody's read the plan, but I'll try to clarify some of that. So, every school, in essence, will be both an on-campus live school, but also a virtual school. And our hope is that the base school and the, and the staff that's allotted to, that handles the majority, we're throwing a number of 80, 85%, is what we'd love, within that current staff of that school. Quest, then, is the next layer of district-wide classes. So, so say some of there's three students who want a German class, that, that's not enough for a base teacher to give up a section of that virtually. So, those requests would go up to the Quest school, and then they would look to see if there's enough requests across the district to create that German class, and they would create it as that. I, so, so that's how that would work, and that's why there may be some limitations. So, every principal may have to collapse some electives in order to be able to produce enough virtual algebra classes and, and live algebra classes at the same time within their current staff. So, that could be a limiting factor. IB's unique, because it is at one school. The other thing about IB is that the requirements for the certifications to be able to teach that, there's not a lot of those teachers around. So, we've had a conversation with, with Ms. Jessie/Beez, I'm not sure what's she going by for sure, so I'll say Beez. And, and she understands that as well, that I mean, she will have to prioritize IB classes for graduation, because those probably won't be viable classes for the district online, and seeing that there won't be other requests from other schools. So, you know, she may give us more Algebra II sections, but save her IB sections there that she would have to cover. So, again, I think there could be limitations if there are small classes that may not actually make in those IB classes. But, she will probably be the one who, on her staff, to be able to make this happen.
And my guess is that maybe on the AP, this might open up some AP options for kids that perhaps haven't even had the opportunity for it. Is that a possibility, too?
I think it is. I think our, our first priority on all the virtual will be to make sure we're covering graduation requirements. I think Mr. Thomas covered that as well. And then, to see where we go from there. We had a good conversation with Dr. Wise from Pellicippi yesterday. They're, they're going to be, by and large, virtual as well, and with online options, asynchronous and synchronous. And they've shared their catalog with us that we're sharing with our high school counselors. So, I think there'll be plenty of opportunities as well to go virtual, do enrollment for students, too. So, we're still trying to think of those advanced students as we think through those programs.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reiswick. Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I just have a, a comment and sort of semi-question in reference to what y'all were talking about. Ms. Bab? I guess I'll direct it toward you as a superintendent. Would it not be reasonable for somebody that moved to town to give them the same option that we're giving everybody else, a week to think about which line they want to, to choose, providing that they could qualify? I mean, that wouldn't, shouldn't pose any problems, should it?
Yes, sir. I think, I think so. Again, if- Yes, sir. I think, I think so. Again, if somebody moves into the school zone, that from out of town, we don't say, I'm sorry, you know, school's full, you can't come. So again, if somebody's moving into town, and they want to look at this and make a choice, as John said, I think, too, probably we're not talking about huge numbers. So, you know, I think we could have an opportunity for situations like that, to, to give parents that choice.
Well, you know, I just, since we were doing a week here, that's where the week came from. But, you know, three days, whatever is reasonable, because they'll probably go home and talk about it, and decide, they'd probably be ready the next day. But actually, what I wanted to, I want to make some comments in reference to some things that have been said. You'll have to pardon my voice. I want to ask you, Mr. Dupler, in reference to these, assuming we did vote, and there was something, most of these things are going to be the tweaking, as somebody said something about tweaking, they could be handled by the superintendent, for the most part. And do you think that if it was something that, you know, required more than that, do you think, say, we had to have a, for some reason, had to have a special meeting of the board, in order to deal with whatever we're talking about? Now, I mean, you know, do you think 72 hours would be reasonable notice for the board to meet? Or does it need to be, what, four days, four working days? Can't be too long, if it's something that requires the board.
Mr. Dupler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. McMillan, the board may have a special meeting with 48 hours' notice. So the answer is yes. I mean, you know, 72-
72 is good.
Yes.
Okay, okay. That would, would kind of take care of the situation there that we were talking about. I personally think that the majority of people in Knox County want to open the schools. They want traditional schools, I believe, most of them. There, for the most part, there are no real absolutes, and certainly not in this case. You know, the old adage, death and taxes are the only absolutes. And nobody wants to see anybody, student, or adult, employee, or otherwise, parent, whomever, gets sick. But at the same time, we need to do something, because I think that it's, from what I'm hearing, it's affecting a lot of kids' socialization, as well as their academic concerns. I think they want to be there with their friends, for the most part. Now, I do think that we should make sure, if we do this, make sure that the masking is enforced. I agree with the good doctor there, that that is an absolute must. But from my standpoint, I think Mr. Thomas and his staff have put together what I consider an outstanding plan. I think it covers as many of the bases as you can possibly cover. Now, as he said, superintendent said earlier, he said he was sure that they'd missed some things, and that can happen to anybody. I don't care who you had planning it, or what kind of a staff. But it's time that we open the schools in Knox County. If people don't want, if they're fearful, if their adults, any of the employees don't want to work, there's the option, take a semester off. Hopefully, maybe they will have some kind of a, you know, vaccination or, or something. They got all excited this morning on the news that they had found something, and that it was, but come to find out, it was going to be way down the road. It wasn't going to be like, available, you know, in a couple of weeks. So having said that, to stop rambling, I would like to make a motion that we adopt the superintendent's plan, and that, could we put, Mr. Dupler, could we, we put the 72 hours or 48 hours' notice incorporated in with that? If nobody objects?
Certainly, we can, we can include, or you all can include that. I think, I think Ms. Owen also had some, some good language that, that she and I were discussing, basically stating that the director of schools would have all the power to, to make tweaks and amendments that, that are granted under state law and board policy and, and practice, so that, basically what that would do is, is he would be able to make changes that I would describe as more minor. But, but if the plan needs to be radically changed, then that's where your, your suggestion comes in, which is, you know, a special, special call board meeting.
That's exactly what I'm talking about. And in a minute, if one of you all will read the, those things to make sure that we, or, or is it a list of things, or it is, do you need to read that into the record, or, or not?
Yes. I mean, I would, I would suggest that, that one of the board members make such a motion, and, and Ms. Owen, I'll, I'll leave it to her to be, to be recognized, and, you know, see if she would do that. But perhaps add the 72 hours that Mr. McMillan is talking about as well.
Will that 72 hours limit any ability, as, as I have it worded now?
It, it would not. I think, I think what he's saying is that-
That would be the soonest that you could have one.
Right, right. I mean, I mean, the, the board policy talks about 48 hours, but, you know, that's not always practical either. I mean, you know, if something comes up with this particular thing, I think he was saying, you know, try, try to shoot for 72. Is that correct?
I would think 72 would take care of it. And what I'm trying to do is establish some potential degree of what we used to refer to as normalcy. It's not going to be normal. It, it won't be for a long, long time. But if we can open schools, have the majority of kids and teachers working, and not only teachers, but we've got a lot of other staff, if we can have those people working safely, then I think we, as a board, and the superintendent, who, by the way, I don't think there's anybody sitting around this table that does not support our superintendent. And again, I want to thank you, say that I think you and the staff did an excellent job. So I would put that in a form-
Mr. McMillan, before you make a motion, would you mind if we can, we have more questions from the board? Would you mind if we answer, if we get some more feedback from staff before we have a motion?
I don't really mind, but usually the way we do it is we put a motion on the floor, and then questions and comments.
Okay, all right. So-
That doesn't, till you take the vote, doesn't, you know, it doesn't impact anything.
Okay. So would you repeat your motion?
It is basically to adopt the plan that the superintendent has come forward with, and include a 72-hour notice if board members or the superintendent feel like we need a special call meeting. That it's not something that the superintendent could, could handle as a, what we might classify as not impacting a large number of people. Is that okay?
Mm-hmm. Would you like some- We have a second?
I'd be glad to second.
Okay. Mr. Norman is seconding that motion. Ms. Owen, do you have a friendly amendment?
I, yes, either a friendly amendment or a substitute motion. To adopt the reopening plan with flexibility for the superintendent to make the same kinds of changes and daily management decisions that are within the duties and responsibilities normally afforded to the superintendent in state law, or policies, and the policies and procedures of all our governing entities. Changes determined to be major in nature by the law director, the Board of Education, or the superintendent should be addressed in a properly noticed meeting with, and I would like to say 48 to 72 hours' notice, so that it can be somewhat consistent with the policy we already have.
Okay. And you're fine with that, Mr. McMillan?
I am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second, Ms. Bab.
Okay. All right. Okay. So we still have additional questions regarding the plan. So we'll come back to voting momentarily. Is that all right? Okay. Ms. Hill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this really is, is not so much addressing the motion as it is just still the general discussion that, that we were having after the plan was presented. I have a couple of questions, actually, on the virtual school. Mr. Thomas, who should those be directed to?
Dr. Ryswick, and if it needs further direction, I'll let, let him direct down the line. So, but, but John's very talented, probably filled them all.
I don't know about that.
Thank, thank you, John. The, the concern that I have heard from a few people in this virtual school, which, which I support, by the way, absolutely I support, is that this has the potential of throwing our high schools into a great deal of turmoil for a week or two, as these schedules that have already been made for students, these guidance counselors have worked their tails off, you know. And then to be told at the last minute that you can't teach this then, or we need to swap that. I guess I'm looking for assurances, if they're available, that the high school schedule will be the, the first priority. However, the classes are offered and taught, and the, the burden of filling the blanks will, in fact, fall to our virtual, our virtual school staff that has been in place.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. And so, so again, to try to continue to provide clarification, the virtual program, I know semantics, but there are some things behind that, is actually not a school. It's a, we left it as a program intentionally.
All right.
What we didn't want to do is have students have to un-enroll from their base high school to receive the virtual.
Right.
So what we, what we do, in essence, again, is, it's really, I would say, first of all, acknowledge that, yes, it is inconvenient, terribly inconvenient. I build a lot of master schedules, and I get that. So, but at the same time, without occurring extreme costs by duplicating staff, we wanted to make sure we were utilizing the staff we had at the base school. So everybody's base enrollment, you know, is how they're staffed, as you guys know at this point. So they're still serving that same number of kids. It's just a matter of trying to figure out how many now have a V option or a virtual option, and how many are going to be live and on campus. So that is a reshuffling of the schedule, because when they made these schedules in the spring, they made it with the assumption that all students would be showing up every day to school. So outside of, you know, again, hiring a tremendous amount of staff, and, and the existing classes not being full, because kids would be in virtual schools at that, at that point, it could cost probably millions of dollars to replicate at that level. So, so what we've asked them to do is go back as these families, and that's why it's critical that the 15th to the 22nd is that window, so that the counselors and principals have the, the time to build that out, and to look at what their requests are. So in essence, they're going back to what they did in the spring, and now they're, they're looking at the new student requests that now have a virtual and, and online, and building those courses from there. So again, we still feel it's best that it's the teachers in the base school that they have for that. And then Quest would be the part that, where they can't give up a section, that they would then look and try to make that across the board. So it isn't convenient, but it is also probably the two things, the two challenges we have is, one, hiring that number of teachers. And we were looking initially at this, if, if all 11,000, 956, that said that they wanted the virtual option in our initial survey, if they all did that, and 80% of those were covered at the base school, we still would be talking about 170 new teachers we would have to hire for the virtual school. So you see how those costs get extremely. So we, there really wasn't a better option, but then to go back to the base schools and ask them to try to work their staff to, to meet the needs of their students on the virtual. And again, inconvenient, we totally understand. And I think, you know, I support the superintendent on the five days that allow that, to move back a little bit, to give us a little more time to get that done. But, but it is, it is inconvenient.
Will, will we be simulcasting some schools?
So the plan will be, again, thinking through a student, a student at Karnes High School who chooses virtual. Our hope is that, Mr. Corum there, the principal, will be able to look at it as the student's schedule. So as those are coming up in real time, which started today, I think around noon, they'll start getting the names of those students. They don't have to wait till the 22nd. They can start pulling those schedules and thinking about, okay, I need an extra section of English one, or something, you know, so I need a virtual section of that. So they'd look in their master schedule and see where they could collapse a class that exists, like going through that. So ideally, then, you know, so say, say Mr. Corum's able to provide the students first block class, second block class, and then he's stuck on third, he doesn't, he can't give that section up. He would make that request to the ladies that got introduced earlier tonight, and then they would look to say, okay, there's seven kids we need for this kind of class. They look around the district to see if there was enough to hire a teacher for that section. And that would not be a Karnes High School teacher, that would be a, a different teacher teaching under our Quest program. And so the student wouldn't necessarily feel the difference. They would have Karnes teacher virtually, period one, period two, period three. They would have Quest teacher, but they'd still be doing it, you know, from home. And then fourth period, they may come back to a class they would have with a Karnes virtual teacher.
All right.
So that would, that's the idea of how it would work. And Quest, then, is just a, is just a follow-up. Yeah, it's, it's kind of complicated, I get it.
It could be a real headache, I hear you.
It could.
But I, but I applaud, applaud the effort that, you know, is going in to this. What about our students that are in, in a lot of our CTE classes, where hands-on is, is required? What are, what are we doing with those students?
So Dr. Wilson, who I think has stepped out, was here earlier, he and his team have been looking at what offerings in CTE are currently at every high school. And then they're, they're making, going to make recommendations next week to the high schools, what programs make sense virtually, and what programs are going to be more for the ones that need to be on campus. So obviously, like a welding is not something you're going to be able to duplicate in a, in a virtual setting. But there are some business classes. I know they have some health science, some, some veins of a health science program that could be done that way. So they're right now evaluating those, and then trying to let the principals and counselors know, you know, with what you offer, here are programs that could be done that way. You know, ideally, we would, we would bring them on campus a few days a week. I think under the current, you know, situation, that could be difficult. Transportation costs, again, to run buses every period, that sort of thing, will get, will get extremely expensive. So again, there are some limitations to it, and we know that, it's not ideal. But our, our hope would be then to plug them into programs that make sense virtually, that may not have been their first choice, what they picked in the spring, but we still help them for their graduation requirements.
I would hope that you would look at situations where some of our kids, especially with the hands-on, the welding, the electronics, this kind of thing, that have to have the hands-on, that are opting for virtual, that- hands-on, that are opting for virtual, that if there would be any possible way to give them an option for that class, to, you know, even if it means transporting themselves, or just, don't close that door, don't close that door, if we, if we got a kid who's a senior who needs, needs that to get his welding certification, and he can drive to do it, you know what I'm saying?
Sure.
I, I hope that we'll, we'll have some, some leeway in those kinds of things.
So I would say two things to that, the first, you know, the reason it would be hard for us to offer that district-wide would be, again, transportation, we can't provide for everybody, but we have, because I've been asked some other questions too, we did, as Mr. Thomas said earlier, tell principals, we want to try to say yes, so if you've thought of ways to do those kinds of things, and kind of worked off, worked out some of those one-offs that make sense for the family in a graduation situation, I think we would try everything we could to support it.
Excellent.
And then one other option we have, again, talking with Dr. Wise at Pell's Hippy, they, what we understand is the majority of the classes they're going to do in person, they're only going to probably offer around ten to fifteen percent of those on campus this year, or this semester, but they are going to be a lot of the CTE classes, so there may be some opportunities for dual enrollment that wouldn't be our teachers, but the student could enroll with a Pell's Hippy teacher and maybe finish that program of study, so we've thought through some of those as options.
Okay. Let's see, as far as virtual goes, I, I read in the guidelines where students that are doing virtual learning will, will be able to participate in any extracurricular activities and after our activities that are going on, reminds me of a, a comment my pastor made about, don't tell me that you can't come to church because you're afraid of COVID and the exposure, and let me run into you in Walmart the next day, so.
True.
I, I'm kind of curious about that decision being made, about students electing to do virtual but still can participate in, in everything else going on that's outside of the school day.
That's, I mean, I, I think you make a good point, and I think most families who are choosing it for that safety reason, I think that, that, that's, I, I would anticipate that they will choose not to participate in those, but thinking outside of things like sports and robotics teams, and, and there are a lot of other things that we do extracurricular wise, that may have some limits in social distance, and may, may be able to do some more social distancing or maybe safer, again, we felt like one of our goals was try to make things feel as normal as they usually do, and so, I mean, I, I get the, the thought on that, but it's the same, it is, there's a lot of irony, but.
My, my high school grandson's thinking, you mean I can stay home and do all my classes, but I can still go basketball practice, I mean, you know?
And I think there may be, there may be, I think we're aware too, there may be folks for various reasons, and, and I think Mr. Thomas alluded to this earlier, we think this is just the start of what virtual can do, we think that some families will choose this because they would have chosen it without COVID, and so I think some of those may be in that situation where they still want the social interaction, but maybe the health concern's not there, so, but it's a good, it makes sense what you're saying.
Okay, thank you. This question's from Mr. Thomas, the, the days that we're front-loading on the calendar for our increment weather days, and then I believe you also said there's going to be a couple of in-service days that would have been scheduled later in the year that are, are being moved.
We, we've left those intact, I believe, we, initially, that's what we were talking about, and that's, that was before we understood that, well, once we found out Clarksville, Clarksville Montgomery got a waiver to move those increment weather days, then that took the pressure off in trying to, to reschedule some of the other days, so, so the calendar basically is still intact, like it was.
So the existing in-service.
In-service days.
The school year is still there. Oh, excellent, excellent, okay. As a comment, Mr. Thomas, I, I really do hear the recommendations about the masks, and hope that you will strongly, strongly go beyond the mask mandatory except for and require masks. Just because if this is going to be our new norm, I think that rather than getting in the take them off, take them on, put them on all day, every day, even myself, I find I will walk in somewhere without one because I'm so taking it on and off, I just, I hope that your staff will relook at that and, and making that an absolute in this plan, but that's just a, a comment from me. And in closing, I know everybody on this board has gotten hundreds of emails, and requests have been all over the place, from, you know, pushing start date back, Labor Day, or, or doing staggered starts, we've, we've, we've all heard about everything. I want to reiterate though that we are offering choices, and honest to goodness, in this time and what we're faced with, I really genuinely believe that, that our KCS leadership has done a wonderful job and put those choices out there, so if, if you are a family that believes that this is not the right thing for you to send your children back to school, no one is telling that, telling you that you have to, you have that choice, and so I just encourage every family to make it a matter of a family meeting, make it a matter of prayer in your family, if you are a praying family, search out what, what the best of maybe even bad options are, and then embrace it and encourage your children to embrace it also, these are just unprecedented times, and respecting all of the very serious health hazards that are out there, you do have a choice not to send your child, so I applaud you and your staff for what you've done.
Thank you, Ms. Hill, Ms. Fab, did you have a question?
I do, but if you have an.
Okay, well, I, a couple of things, I just wanted to also applaud the superintendent and the executive team, they have spent countless hours, countless hours working on this plan, and, and the, the level of detail in the plan is, is impressive, and so I appreciate all that time that you've all spent working on this plan. I have a couple of questions that, one, to go back to what virtual school would look like particularly, you talked about high school, but if, if Shannon or John, one of you could talk about elementary school, and particularly, particularly, I've heard from some kindergarten families who are very concerned, so if you could talk, speak to those, that would be helpful.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, we, we did spend a lot of time thinking about our youngest learners, and really thinking about this on the continuum of what does a five-year-old need that's different from an eighteen-year-old, they're very different needs, there is a policy that the state board has put out that requires that kindergarteners are participating in, in school for four hours a day, even if they're virtual, and are through, first grade through twelfth grade must be engaged for six and a half hours, however, that doesn't all have to be synchronous learning, we are able to structure that so that we will have certified kindergarten teachers who know kindergarten, who will be thinking through, what does that look like for the student to do online, engaged with a teacher, and then have frequent times for them to be offline and doing work independently and engaging in some, some appropriate, age-appropriate work, we know they need breaks, we know they need recess, all those things are important, we, we agree that ideally, we would have our youngest kids in the classrooms working with them, but because of COVID, we are having to think through these other options and live within the constraints of that, that state board policy.
Okay, thank you, I think, does anybody have any questions on that particular topic while she's here? Okay, thank you so much, okay, the other question that I had, I would like to hear, I know that Mr. Myers and I think Dr. Rieswick or somebody else has been really spending a lot of time with Dr. Buchanan from the Health Department recently, so Jason, if you would come and if you could talk about that, and then also if you could talk about the, I think you have additional information going out to special education families, so if you could speak to both of those topics, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, yeah, our, our relationship with the Health Department has, has, has been incredibly valuable, and, and it's been in place long before we had COVID-19, prior to the onset of all this, we were already meeting, my team was already meeting monthly with the team at the Health Department, so it, it's a very important and valuable partnership for us, I, I can't thank Dr. Buchanan and Charity Menefee enough for their willingness to really just open door, I mean, we've, we've gone through periods where we've talked daily, and in the last few weeks, we've had scheduled formal meetings with Dr. Buchanan, Charity Menefee, myself, Dr. Rieswick, and Lisa Wagner, our nursing supervisor, so we've really been in pretty constant contact with them as it relates to any recommendations about the contact tracing, our protocols for entering school, temperature checks, screenings, all those pieces, we've worked hand in hand with our Health Department in those recommendations, in fact, we, we met with them as recently as yesterday to review the draft one final time, made some adjustments to the language of the, of the mask protocol, and you know, in, in our minds, you know, I, I hear what's being said, right, we, we can't really, how much can we really socially distance in a classroom, and I, and I think the language of requiring the mask in that circumstance does really essentially make the mask a mandate, right, like we've been in our classrooms, I, and I hear our teachers and, and the gentleman who spoke early, earlier, and he's correct, and that's why we're saying the masks are a requirement when we don't have the capacity to socially distance, and so we, you know, we worked really hard on, on trying to get that language right, but yeah, we've been in contact with the Health Department and their team constantly throughout all this, and again, we have a really sound protocol in place as it relates to the contact tracing for when school does begin, and of course, currently, we're already have students engaging in extracurriculars and various other activities, so we're, we're watching that, that machine and that protocol work now before we actually have, you know, full, full start of school, so again, couldn't be more thankful for the partnership with our, with our folks at the Health Department. The second question had to do with the, the additional messaging we were going to send to our, our families who have children with disabilities, and I know that, you know, there's, there's been some frustration with families, you know, waiting for that specific communication, and what I'll say is, in my, in my measure, and as I approach operations and student supports, children with disabilities are children first, and it was important for us to have a comprehensive plan that kept the needs of all of our students in mind, and then it's the job of the Student Supports Department to come in and make sure that our children with disabilities, our ELs, kids who are served under Section 504, and the students with additional health needs, then we come in and we plan for them and make sure that they can access whatever it is that we've designed for all students, so to me, that's how the, that's how our department is supposed to work in serving children, so it was important that, that we sent out our messaging behind the message for, you know, for the, for the entire district, I believe my message went out to families at about six o'clock to discuss some of the service options that would be available to them if they chose to go virtual, and so, and also gave them points of contact, so if they wanted more information, schedule IEP meetings, whatever the case may be, they'll have that option, but I, you know, I believed it was important for us to get the plan for, for all children, and then explain how Student Supports will make sure that students can access it.
Thank you, that makes sense, all right, thank you, Mr. Myers, any questions for Jason on these two topics?
I, I have some concerns that some special ed parents have addressed with me, and I did sit in on one of those meetings that they had, the first thing that they have said is that they do feel like they are being heard by you, they feel like you are listening and taking their concerns very seriously, and they appreciate that very much, they feel like that has not always been the case, and, and they appreciate that, that they are, are beginning to be heard, I think I'm just going to fly through these, and then if you want to address any of them, maybe that would be the best way to go about it. As we've already heard, our parents of special needs students were concerned that there was not a focus group for them, and so they made their own, and, and they have been meeting regularly, they have brought in legislators, I went to, to one of those, and not been able to be to, to another one since then, but they, they've had some very deep and very honest conversations, they feel like their students are being put behind everyone else as far as planning, and I, I tried to assure them that it is happening simultaneously, even though they don't necessarily see that happening, they have a large concern that their students are currently missing their adaptive therapies, and that they, they will be very, that, that they will fall behind where they were when we left school, they feel that they need appropriate adaptive equipment from day one, and so they, they want to know how they can ensure whatever is needed, whatever laptop version they need, whatever is going to fit their IEP, they don't want it to happen down the road after school starts, they want to be sure that that can happen day one, they feel like there needs to be some kind of baseline that is communicated for how we are going to meet their needs, and, and I'm, I'm not sure exactly what that would entail, and I'm, I'm not sure that anyone is sure what it entails, but basically, the idea was, tell us how you plan to meet our needs, what is that baseline, what do, what do we need to do, what do you need to do, what should we expect, basically, and it sounds like that you are starting to communicate that already. I, I think you have already addressed the communication issue that has happened in the past, one parent noted that she was getting multiple texts and phone calls and communications from school for her student who is a general education student, but her student who was in special education services, she did not have any communication at all, and I wrote down a couple of things that some parents in those meetings have said, she said, we have every reason to feel like we have been, like they have forgotten our kids because they always forget our kids, and that was, that was pretty heartbreaking to hear, she said, just send me an email, and I think all our parents feel this, just send me one email to let me know you're working on it, and then I haven't been forgotten. And I, I think that's, that's the majority of their concerns, it was largely about communication and about finding out how their needs are going to be met and what they need to do to make sure those needs are met.
Sure, so I'll take a stab at addressing a few of them, there, there were a lot, I didn't want to jump in while, while you were going, but yeah, that, that baseline kind of information that they're seeking is, is going to be, is part of that email, and certainly, you know, as we are bringing back our extended contract folks and things, I mean, just like school principals are, are looking to see who's registering for online, we're going to be doing the same thing in our department, right, so in terms of people who need additional, you know, whether it's an augmented device or a completely different device than the Chromebook, we're going to have people in place to, to help support that, and, and our goal is absolutely the same as theirs, right, if, if you choose that virtual option, we want to make sure we have everything in place so that those kids can start on time. In, in terms of, of the communication, you know, I, I want to give my case managers and our teachers a shout-out, I mean, I, I, no, nothing's ever going to be perfect, but I, I know because we, we kept the data, we, we made over nineteen thousand individual contacts with our families during the school closure, so I'm, I'm pretty proud of that, and man, I hope I can have the opportunity to talk to the family who said they didn't hear from someone, because I would definitely like to dig into that a bit more, because I know that our team was really getting after it, trying to make those contacts and trying to keep up as best as they could, also, you know, in terms of that parallel planning, as we were putting together the, the, the plan, our department was involved in every single step of the way, whether it was me personally or some, or our program supervisors, there's not a document that's been shared online or to here tonight where Student Supports wasn't actively involved in, in advocating for those families and for those kids, and then, and then the last thing that I will take a stab at addressing is I, I do know that there was some disappointment, that there wasn't a specific focus group to address our children with disabilities, however, we did have families who had children with disabilities that were on the family, were, were part of the family focus group, so, you know, we tried to hit all the avenues that, that we could.
Thank you very much.
All right, any other questions on these two topics? Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Fab, I think you were next.
Sure, and I just want to say, I, kind of forwarding on this, but not really a question with Mr. Myers, I mean, I appreciate Ms. Bush coming and talking about the concerns, and I do think sometimes people don't think we think about our kids with IEPs and 504s, and I think sometimes we don't publicly ask the questions because they're such unique situations that it's hard for us, but. situations that it's hard for us. But I know Jason can attest to the fact that I have emailed him and texted him many times during this period. So I do want everyone to know. I don't think me alone. I think everybody on our board cares about all of our students. And I just want to reiterate that. And I appreciate Ms. Bush, you know, speaking on behalf of that population of students. I do have one question, and I do think so much of this is high school, and I think, Mr. Rieswick, this is probably going to be directed for you. And it kind of comes back to sort of the CTE question. I'm getting from some of my parents that probably want to do the virtual, but their kid is in a very specific thing, like a choral group, and they're getting to senior year, maybe even trying to get scholarships and stuff like that. Do we think there's the opportunity, if there's not the virtual option of something, if there's something very unique, that the child might be able to come for maybe one period to participate in that? And I know it might be on a very one-to-one basis, but I do think, you know, especially some of these junior seniors that are really working to their college resumes, it will be helpful.
So thank you, Ms. Bab. So I hesitate a little bit to like stand here tonight and say yes, because 90 principals will kill me. I don't want that to happen. So I do think, again, what we said to them, to the principals were, if they, because they were asking, some people asked for some things, you know, we had some people that said, "If a student's quarantined and we don't want to move them over to virtual, and a teacher's willing to teach them why they do a hybrid class," and we're like, you know, the district is not asking a teacher to do that. If a teacher comes to you and you work that out and you, then have a conversation, let your grade level director know, and you know, we'll work through that. So I think this is the same kind of thing. To me, you know, we want to be fair and equitable. So we understand that, too. If we do certain things, then we're going to have people saying, "How come this person got to do it and I didn't get to do it?" So, but we also don't want to take that out of principals' hands. I mean, they know they're on the ground. The teachers are on the ground. What we've asked is they not ask people to do things that they're not comfortable with, because it was very clear from the task force that teaching hybrid as well as, you know, teaching a class and live and virtual at the same time is very difficult. So that was not part of our plan. So to me, it would be more, you know, rare cases where that could happen. But we would leave that discretion up to principals, you know, discussing if we can make those things happen. And I know that may just open the floodgate, and I don't want to do that.
Well, and I'm not, and once again, I do think it has ultimately got to be up to the principal. It is, they are running their building. They're going to be the best ones to know what their needs are. So I guess kind of, and it kind of gets back to the IEP sort of thing. It's like, for these unique one-off situations, is the best route right now emailing the principal?
Yeah, I would say...
Once again, I'm not trying to floodgate.
No, you're right. I mean, and I'm trying to be cognizant of what they might be thinking, too. So I do think, too, there are a lot of factors that may go into that. Let me just to give them some space to think through that. They may be in a community where, you know, people coming on to campus and off campus, we already have in the policy about, I mean, let's open and plan about limiting visitors to campus. So all of those things complicate more than just, you know, that. Someone's going to have to do a temperature check on visit, like that kind of thing. So I think there are a lot of factors there, and I think principals and teachers will have different things at their school that make that happen. So I think, again, the best thing is probably to make a virtual or on-campus choice. I think those are the cleanest things we're prepared to do now. But I think that would be, to me, what families should consider first and foremost in making their decision. And knowing that there may be some sacrifices they have to make with that, again, from courses we can and can't offer. And then, I would say, then, maybe have a conversation with your principal.
Thank you very much. And once again, I want to support my principals on trying to do the best job they can, because I know this is difficult for everybody.
Mr. Thomas, did you want to weigh in on that?
Thank you. And John, thank you for that answer. And Ms. Bab, thank you for the question. And I was sent to work this morning with specific directions. Don't kill the arts, you know, with what you're doing. So, from my artist, artist wife. So, yes, and just for principals to know where I'm coming from, too. I mean, some students come to school, and you know, we want them coming for the academic reasons, but we also know that students are in performing arts, they're in, you know, choral music program, they're in instrumental program, they do drama and theater and things of that nature that are extremely important for them being well-rounded, and also for us to do everything we can do to protect the arts as well. So even with this virtual program. So that's kind of my position on this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. And you know, if you're watching and you're thinking about your child being in that situation, I would say, make your request known, but then give them some time to work through these issues, because there are more questions from parents than they are going to be able to deal with quickly. So I would say, give them some patience and some grace. School, they have this time to be able to prepare. So please allow them the time to be able to process through those questions. You may not get an immediate answer, but it's not because you've been forgotten. They just need some time to process. I think Ms. Satterfield has some questions.
Yes, thank you. Just two clarifying questions. So the virtual, if students go into virtual programming, that receive food, and my brain's gone, program students be able to receive food and reduce meals. Is that going to be similar to how we were when we got out of school, the site pickups?
I believe so, but I know Russ and Brett have worked specifically on this, so it might be best if...
Brett Foster, do you want to come on out?
Yeah, one of them tackles that.
Sure. Thank you. She's the one with all the answers.
Thank you, Ms. Satterfield. Yes, we plan on doing a grab-and-go type model. I think in the updated plan, it does say something about parents and students choosing that option to contact the school nutrition department to set that up, just because we are going to be doing our normal lunch service for those students that are in school. So we just want some advance notice of how many to-go meals we need to prepare.
Okay, but they'll still be able to get it at their home site?
Base school, yes.
Base school? Okay. Awesome. Thank you. And the last clarifying question, I don't think it's, I don't have it in question form. I just want someone to speak to it. If we go to the more mask-required situation, what does discipline look like and what does teacher support around that look like to enforce it?
Who would like to take that lovely question? That's a great question, Ms. Satterfield. Nobody wants to address that.
That's all I got.
Dr. Rieswick is the winner.
We just drew straws, and I got the short one.
Sorry, you lost that one.
So I would say this, and this is how we talked about our principals. And again, they get this, because they do this every day. Mr. Thomas had mentioned, it's kind of like caps, you know, we don't want to, people wearing hats to school. Our goal is not to make that a suspendable offense, right? So what we're doing is asking them to think about creative ways. We've had some principals, I know one plan that was really good, they've talked about having different color masks for different days of the week. So we can have things on hand to say, you know, wear this one, and we'll wash them at the end of the day. I'm not saying everybody's going to do that, but I mean, there's certain kinds of things we've thought about. You know, they had, there's some leeway for a classroom to say, because we do know, people are across the board on this, you know, that I am opposed to my parents. So, you know, are there things we could do to create spaces that are socially distanced in parts of a classroom away from students who are wearing masks? So again, our idea is to educate kids first, not make this a punitive measure. We do think, and I think we heard the physician speak earlier, that, you know, that that is what we need to do, and that is the safest thing we can do for all students and all teachers that are there. But, you know, obviously, we're not going to deny kids school. So our goal will be to think of creative ways to encourage that, maybe to incentivize that to be something that they would do. And then we ask, you know, try to make the accommodations around that. A lot of parent communication, a lot of conversation about why that happens, and a lot of opportunities to get that right, and to provide, you know, masks if it's an access issue and those sorts of things that are there. So I don't have a perfect answer, and we don't want to, you know, we don't have like, strike one, strike two, strike three. Again, not supposed to be punitive. We're trying to do it and try to educate people that it's the healthy thing to do to be a good citizen.
Thank you. And I would like to just say that I'm not, I don't want it to be a punitive situation, because we can't afford that. More discipline.
Totally agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Satterfield. Ms. Christie, do you have a question? I can't tell with your mic.
I was just going to ask about the mask. I mean, and I do agree that we need to do it, but I'm hearing a lot from especially, you know, kindergarten, first grade, second grade. You know, am I going to spend my whole day having a battle over a mask, you know? So I mean, I, but I know there's no easy answer for that, but I am hearing that a lot.
It's a valid question. I sent a couple of these guys a video that I came across online, and yeah, it's, there's going to be a lot of, and you know, hopefully, the first week of school, they can spend a lot of time talking about this and practicing and that kind of thing. And speaking of that question, I've had a question from a couple of people about teacher evaluations for this year, and that was one of the things that I think I reached out to Dr. Rieswick a while back, and he and I talked about, you know, what could be helpful in this situation that's so uncertain. And that was one of the things he had mentioned. So I've spoken with some of our state delegation, and they are extremely cooperative. I've talked with Representative Zachary and with Becky Duncan-Massie and Senator Briggs, and they are all very receptive to speaking to the governor and the lieutenant governor. They will likely have a session coming up later in August. I don't know for sure if that will be able to be added, but that's what I've asked for, for them to push for that. So I'm hopeful that maybe we could, we could start the, you know, maybe not start the year knowing that, but at least at the beginning of the year, rather than waiting until January session. So anyway, I just wanted to put that out there, that our legislative delegation, the ones I've spoken to, understand the need for that. And so I'm really hopeful that maybe that can get some traction. Mr. Thomas?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. And we had this conversation just the other day. Not sure what day it was. This day is only Wednesday. But our conversation, and I think 100% staff support this, we would like to have a year where we didn't evaluate, and also that assessment, I'm not sure what the assessment's going to show anyway, from the standpoint of, teachers have too much on their plate right now, and our principals, if we can just get back in school, get back in school safely, let's put this off a year. So what I'd like to do is bring a resolution to the board to support that, so our legislators would agree to that.
Yeah.
And try to upworse.
Absolutely. I mean, I concur. I think, you know, I think from the very beginning, you know, as this conversation has gone on, that, you know, that I've said to Mr. Thomas and Dr. Rieswick at various times, you know, our educators just need to make sure that they're focusing on making sure that students are progressing as they should and not have to worry about those things. Our teachers know the standards. They know the expectations, and they're professionals, and they can do their jobs. So hopefully, we'll get some traction on that. And so I just wanted to make sure that that was brought up. Do you have other questions?
I just have one question about the motions that are on the floor. As Ms. Hill suggested stronger language on masks, the issue was coming up about students going in for classes. My concern, I go back to my concern of if we adopt even the language that was presented by Ms. Owen, that that, you know, who decides, you know, that these are minor things and that the board doesn't need to approve it? I'm just a little fuzzy on if we needed to come back and approve something, how, you know, I guess the executive team would, I mean, I don't know. I'm just confused as to who makes that decision, which is why I thought from the beginning that we need to allow the superintendent to do the job we're paying him to do. So I'm still not clear on how this would work. So, Ms. Owen?
I think one of the issues that TSBA wanted to be sure, that we looked at, something like a mask, does that fall under our dress code policy? Where does that belong? So looking at it from a perspective of which policies this plan could be impacting, I think we will need to look at those policies as we go along and make adjustments. So I think that was their whole point of us being involved in it, would be so, I mean, if we adopt a plan that conflicts with our policies, we have the exact same problem. So I think as we go through, there, if we adopt with flexibility, which is the point of it, that we would have the flexibility to make those adjustments as we need to.
Okay. So my question would be, what would, if we needed to come back together to reevaluate and have something new, what would be an example of something we would come back to do?
Like, what's at the level we need to know?
You know, like if we decide that we, if the superintendent talks to the Health Department and has, you know, their guidance is, "We think you need to go to all virtual," are we going to then take two days to think about it and then gather so that we can talk about it? Like, is that an example?
I think that would depend on whether it is an immediate situation, just like if it were a weather event. If it's something that is happening right now that has to be changed, then that, of course, falls within his duties. So I think as long as it falls within his duties, then he should be able to do that. We could come back and ratify something later. But if it falls within his duties now, he would still have complete control.
Mr. Norman, did you have a comment? I can't tell with your mic.
No, I'm just hoping that we can move on a little quicker. I think, I think that it is Bobby's call. I want to put as much of the responsibility on him and his staff. And I think also, we have a law director who can weigh in on some of these situations where there's a borderline call. And I'm good with that. Let's vote. I'm calling for the question.
Mr. Norman, I think this is too big an issue for us to...
Well, that's still a call for...
Okay. So we need to vote on whether we have the question, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. I don't see a second.
What?
Okay. So we have a second?
What, what's the?
So we're voting on whether we're calling for the question.
On the motion?
We haven't finished discussion yet, so...
On the original motion?
But right now, we're voting on whether we're calling for the question or if we're having more discussion.
And you want to have more discussion?
Ms. Bab has her mic down.
I mean, do you think, can I ask the question? Do you think it's going to get any better if we sit here and talk for another hour? I mean, I mean that with respect.
Right. I'm trying to get clarification on exactly what we're voting for.
Remember, we're not going to get a perfect situation.
Mr. Dupler, can you weigh in, please?
Yeah, sure. I could try and help. So, you know, I think to Mr. Norman's point and Madam Chair to your point as well, if going through with this plan, you all adopt the plan and go with the motion that's been laid on the table, and the superintendent needs to make a change, and it violates board policy, for instance, let's say that he has to truncate the school year, and not only would that violate board policy, it would likely violate state law as well, you know, 180 days, then that's going to have to come back before this board, no question. So that's a good example of what would need to. But if it's anything below a board policy or a state law, then really, I mean, it's going to be the superintendent's call. And then, as has been suggested, that would require discussion not only with Mr. Thomas, but with you as the executive committee, and then I can be involved and help however you all would like.
Okay. And one more question.
Okay. And if that seems satisfactory, I'll rescind the call for the question.
Okay. Mike, the only question I have, are there any policies currently that are in conflict with this plan? Mr. Dupler, do you?
The only one that I saw that could possibly be, you know, an issue would be the dress code, which was talked about. You know, but again, is a mask part of the dress code, or is it part of a safety measure? So I mean, you know, even that's kind of a, can be argued either way. So a vote would certainly do away with any questions.
Okay. Mr. McMillan?
In reference to what the law director was saying, having spent many years at the high school level, I know for a fact that there'll be, whatever you do, we all need to do the same thing. One high school doesn't need to do one thing or one part of the high school. And it has to be enforced, because if kids, one area of town are getting by with not wearing them, don't you think that kids across town are going to hear about it? You know, they talk back and forth. We just need to be consistent. If you want everybody to wear one, then, you know, we need to go with that. We just need to be aware of that and consistent. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. So, we've rescinded that motion, and we can go to our other motions. Is that correct?
Good.
Okay. Ms. Owen, would you mind restating your motion since it's been so long that, or Ms. Coteen can, whoever?
Okay. The motion was to adopt the reopening plan with flexibility for the superintendent to make the same kinds of changes in daily management decisions that are within the duties and responsibilities normally afforded to the superintendent in state law, board policies, and the policies and procedures of all our governing entities. Changes determined to be major in nature by the law director, the board, or the superintendent should be addressed in a meeting with 48 to 72 hours' notice.
That's the motion on the floor. So, Ms. Coteen, are you good?
I'm good.
Okay. If we have no other questions, we will have a roll call vote on this motion.
Ms. Satterfield?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Thank God, yes.
Ms. Bab?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Bowens?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Ms. Christie?
Yes.
Ms. Horn?
Yes.
That's non-yes votes.
Motion carries. And I think we're adjourned, are we? Ms. Coteen, is that it? I don't even know where my agenda is.
Motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. We are adjourned. Thank you.